Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Did anybody tell you they're not gonna be here, Jose?
I think Marie said she wasn't gonna show up.
You haven't heard from Shirley though, right?
No.
Okay. Is this the call of the meeting? I could just read it from here. I don't have the dates or anything.
Hang on. It wasn't published. It was posted on a webpage. You don't have to publish still under the COVID executive orders. We don't have to publish the notice.
Oh, we don't? Okay. Alright.
It was posted in the timeframe, so that it was required.
Okay, so. I'll just read the public hearing as the notice then, because I don't have another note.
Right.
Okay, so the zoning board of appeals is meeting to discuss the request by Latoya A. Latoya and Jason Marsh for a variance under section 3-2B, both requirements to allow the construction of a single-family residence on a parcel without the required lot frontage at lot 128-31017 Cottage Grove Road, R20 Zone. And this was on the website as per the guidelines. And it's Jacqueline Isaacson, chairperson, and Shirley Williams, secretary.
I just promoted Latoya to march to battalist that she could unmute herself.
So just so I know, we have one, two, three, four. Okay, so everybody that's here right now is voting, because we're gonna start the meeting. Okay.
And is there anyone else that's with you at all that's in the attendee room?
Um, David March.
Okay, but he's the one behind you?
Yeah, he's right here.
Alright, so there's nobody else?
No, it's just the two of us.
That needs to be promoted. Okay.
Alright, well then, Latoya, if you could tell us and Jason what you want to do and why you have a hardship that's causing you not to do what you need to do.
My understanding is in zoning, in a rear lot, you need to have a certain frontage to the street. When the land was purchased, there was some question as to whether or not Bidwell Parkway was a paved road or not. And it came, as far as I know, to be deeded to us with the other five lots. It just became one big purchase. Now that there won't be a Bidwell Parkway, it's now become a rear lot, and so we have to have access to the lot to build the house.
Okay, and.
Trying to bring up on screen the property right now. Give me a second.
Okay, so how long have you had this property?
Um, I would say a year.
It's been a year now.
Okay. And your purpose of buying it was to build a house on it?
Correct.
Which was going to have frontage on Bidwell?
Correct.
And now, okay. And now there is no, it's not a street?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. And other than that, are you gonna be building a house with all the other requirements? Like side yards and things like that? Is it gonna meet those guidelines?
Yes, our intentions are to build as centrally located as physically possible with the wetlands and flood zone. And really, we essentially want to be buried in the woods as far back as we can be.
How big is this lot?
4.93 acres.
Oh, wow.
I'm gonna share. Can you everybody see that?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
So that's the, this is the old subdivision map, all these lots. And what you see here, the practical, at one point, the street was supposed to go through over to Cottage Grove Road. What you see here is, if you see these lines that I'm just outlining with my cursor, that's the wetlands. So really, going any farther, you really can't bring the road south and all these other lots that are on the east side of the, what was gonna be the road, really are undevelopable because of wetlands. So the only, the only place you can get a house here is on the property that I'm pointing out right now, which is asking for a variance so they could connect out through a driveway out to Oak Lane. Obviously, they don't have, they would have plenty of frontage on that paper street, but it never got built. But since, because there's a practical difficulty in putting in a full town road just for one, just for one lot, they're asking for a driveway with a variance for the frontage. So in effect, it's a rare lot which meet all the requirements for that.
So it's that, it's that whole big lot there?
Right. Let me see if there's another. I got, that's the one I'm showing you. That's the application. So here's our GIS, which shows flood hazard zones and the wetlands on the property.
Uh huh.
One.
And did they come in and talk with you about it?
Yes.
And this is what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that was the solution we had for that property. There's been a number of inquiries and because of the wetland situation, it's a, this is the real, the only real possibility is to put a driveway out to Oak Lane and just build one house on this property.
What about the other, is this only this parcel, or are we gonna see other variances come before us?
I don't know. Did you guys, I'm trying to remember, did you guys also purchase the other lots on the other side? Or no, they're all separate?
All the lots were purchased as one purchase. There is no intentions to build anything other than a single-family dwelling. And those lots will not be resold. I look at that as my buffer zone to neighbors. I wish I could have that much buffer all the way around, but you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, so these lots, as you can see, this lot has a little bit that's not wetlands, but again, it would be pretty difficult to find, to build something there. It's mostly, Sloan is on map 128, block 3, lot 22. Where my cursor is, is most, I would say, more than probably 55, 60% wetlands and just a small amount in here. So it's for a real, you know, the only real clean lot, even then, it has flood zone and in the back and wetlands that buffer it, I guess, from this neighbors would be, would be this lot.
So the ones, the ones above it on this map that are Oak Lane, are those, are those houses on there?
Yes, yeah, yes, they are. They're.
Those are on Oak Lane, so.
Right, they're the neighbors. Let me see if I can at least get the GIS map up there.
So that driveway would be going past one of the left side yard of one of the families on Oak Lane on that property? Is it number 10?
I think it says 10.
10, yeah.
No, wait, 16? I can't read it.
10 and 16.
10 and 16. It would be 10 and 16, I think, right?
No, I think, isn't it, aren't you gonna go?
In the middle, between 10 and 16.
Right, between 10 and 16, but.
Okay. Okay, I see it. Okay. So I guess the question, so is that, that road's gonna stay like the way it is? Is it a dirt road or?
Fully wooded.
This road, the road that you're gonna be coming out of to go to the street?
It's a wooded lot.
So.
Do you see the GIS now? Are you able to see the screen I just put up?
No, I still have the other string.
Okay, so.
How long do you anticipate that driveway being? I'm assuming it's gonna be a paved driveway?
That has not been determined yet. Essentially, there needs to be a setback according to zoning of where I am to the backside of those houses.
Right.
6, 8, 10. And I would probably try to put it as far back as I could, a couple hundred feet. I mean, we're talking about, I would like the same gap that I have on the right side to the northern line. So and those are like .23s and .15 acres. That's essentially what I'm looking to do. Pretty much right where that arrow was just, right there is probably where the driveway would come in.
But, okay, but I guess this question's more for Jose than it is for you. Is the driveway they're gonna build gonna be adequate for emergency vehicles to get down, an ambulance, fire truck?
Yeah, they still have to meet all the requirements for real lots, so the, like any other, there's plenty of real lots in town and they all, the driveways have to meet a certain criteria to be able to have emergency access. So that's not, this is certainly not the first real lot that we will have approved. I think they still need to show they meet all the other criteria, including a driveway that's adequate for emergency access.
Okay, alright, just wanted to check with that.
Is that land clear now? Are there trees or anything that are there now?
Fully wooded.
This is a photograph, aerial photograph that used to air, it's a 2020 of April, about a year, a year old. So it's probably in that condition right now.
But right now, there's still trees. The texture's a little deceiving. The whole thing has trees in that little area where it's.
Right, it is all wooded.
Okay.
That aerial shows it all wooded.
Are there, are there, your neighbors all got notice of the application?
They did.
So here's, here's a sort of a sideways view.
Oh, wow.
So you can see how many trees there are. Oak Lane's up in here, as Cyrus Lane is here. So if you flip around, you can see it's pretty, there's a, there's a neighbors on Oak Lane and there's the.
This is the property that would, the whole tree area there?
Yeah, that whole tree area is the undeveloped property. There's Oak Lane, sort of looking down towards Cottage Grove, so. Here's where the road comes in, where the driveway would come in, probably into here. And so there's plenty of trees right now.
And you're gonna leave as many trees as you can? Is that, is that your plan? So you keep it wooded?
Yeah, I do not plan on taking down more than 3/4 of acre in the middle. And you know, that considerably gives me the buffer that I want. And allows, you know, you don't want sound travel from neighbors or from us or back and forth. And it just allows you to have your seclusion, and that's essentially why we purchased that almost five acres.
Wow, nice, very nice. Any other commissioners have any questions at this time?
No questions, Robert Eich.
Okay, and Tashna, you're muted as well?
Keith Martin, no questions.
Okay. Tashna?
No questions, no questions.
Okay, do we have people that want to speak that are, that are in the waiting room there?
There are people in the waiting room that I think are neighbors. If they want to speak, they, excuse me, they need to use the raise your hand feature. There we go. Susan Garten raised her hand, so I'm gonna allow her to talk.
Okay, Susan, can you please list your name and address for the record?
Sure thing. Good morning, good evening. I'm Susan Garten. I live on five Cyrus Lane, so I'm one of the abutting neighbors to this property.
Okay.
So, under state law, the zoning board of appeals can grant zoning variances after deciding two things. First, you have to decide that the variance doesn't harm the public health, safety, convenience, welfare, and property values of the existing community, of which I'm a member. Second, you have to decide whether enforcement of the variance would create exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship for the Marshes, the property owners requesting the variance. And on both grounds, I think that you should deny the variance request. So as been said, the property is in the R20 zone, and its contours and characteristics were thoroughly mapped years ago. As you can see, it has very limited frontage on Oak Lane, and much of its acreage is either wetlands or in a flood zone. And for those reasons, abutting residents, myself included, bought our houses because we believed that the property could not be developed. We enjoy the woodlands in our backyards. We enjoy the wildlife in the woodlands and the predictable drainage from the undisturbed woodlands in flood zone. Our welfare and property values would be adversely affected if you grant this variance. Additionally, you should not interpret the law as hardship standard to reward owners who purchased a property with full knowledge of its problems. This property, almost five acres, sold for a rock-bottom price precisely because of the non-conforming frontage and the presence of wetlands and a flood zone. The purchasers gambled that the town would grant variances and other permits, but they created their own hardship by purchasing a property with known problems. Variances are primarily intended to benefit property owners who are adversely affected by zoning changes that are enacted after they purchased the property, thereby diminishing what they expected would be its useful value. They are not intended to benefit and should not be granted to new owners who gamble on a cheap lot with problems they knew or should have known about. So speaking for myself and my neighbors, we ask that you deny this variance.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't see any others hands up. If anybody else wants to speak, there's a, at the bottom of your screen, if you hover over it, there's a little hand, raise your hand feature. You need to raise your hand. I don't see anyone.
Okay, so Jose, when they purchased this land, that Bidwell was still a street though, correct?
Well, the Bidwell, it's always been a paper street on a subdivision map that was on file, that was on file, that was approved. Problem is, obviously, the wetlands regulations came into play after the approval of the subdivision, and therefore, pretty much, I don't know how they would have been able to build anyway, even before there were formal wetlands regulations. Because of, if you look at this map, it's quite a bit of wetlands, and I think the other map had the actual.
This is all the wetlands here?
Yeah, all the shaded, it was a map wetlands. I think the actual field delineated wetlands, which is on the other map, showed a slightly less. So, as you know, that property, characteristics of the property go with the land, not with the owner. So I think what you need to determine is there was a hardship prior to their purchasing it. If the previous owner would have had hardship and would they, with the new owners, I guess, would also have that hardship. It's property values that do not stay with an owner, stay with the land. The other consideration, is there any other reasonable use of the property if you do not grant a variance? Is there any other reasonable use under zoning? I think that's, that's the other legal answer you have to ask yourselves. And is what they're asking for, the minimal, the minimal relief, which is, would be one, 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 one house, you know, on, granted, there's a lot of wetlands, but there's also a lot of, you know, almost four acres, I would imagine, of three or four acres of clean land, so.
And that was land that was supposed to be developed, or that was planned?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, can you see this one? I don't know. I missed second. Share screen.
I have, I have a question.
There's a subdivision map. It shows.
Okay, so that's Cottage Grove Road there, and the other side is Oak. And Bidwell Parkway is where?
This is, this, this, down the middle.
Down the middle, okay, okay.
This, this piece of land that you can't, and actually, if you saw the, you know, unfortunately, can't get the other, let me see if I can put up the partial's GIS.
Okay, well, why are you doing that? Tashna, you had your hand up first. Do you want to unmute and?
Yes, good evening. Other than the nature or the earth being disturbed, does, do the neighbors have any other complaints? Because I, I don't understand how the property value would decrease if new property is built on the land. I don't understand that equation.
Well, I mean, that was their opinion. We listen to what residents have to say. We, you know, we hear, it's a public hearing. But we, we have to make a decision as a board, you know, I mean, weighing what neighbors have to say, but.
So could we clarify the three main complaints that they had? I believe one of them was disturbing the nature of the area. Two was decreasing their property value, and three was the moral issue of buying the land knowing that the land had issues. Were those all three, the complaints, and mainly all three are technically opinions?
They said something about the drainage. They said something about the drainage of the wet.
Possible, possible drainage, but. Does this have to go to wetlands?
Yeah, it would have to go to the wetlands agency.
It's not something, the wetlands issue is not something that we have to make a decision on then, because this, this site, once they come up with their site plan, it's gonna have to go to wetlands anyway, and they're gonna have to, you know, decide how close they want them and where they might, where they feel it's the right place to build on the lot. Let me see what Keith has as a question, and then if that neighbor wants another turn speaking, we can let her speak. Keith, you had your hand up.
Yes, my question is about the, this Bidwell, which was at one point, along with the property, expected to be a right-of-way, and that changed once the wetlands review came up. Why wasn't that ever developed as a dead-end street, if you will, up into the area of which we're talking about now adding the house? I mean, it's gonna be a driveway, I'm assuming, that would be the responsibility of the landowner and not the town, lighting included, but just curious as to why they didn't maybe make a half-street on Bidwell to begin with. Was there some concern about?
I think just the number.
Value of property? What was it?
Yeah, are you see, let's see.
Well, Bidwell didn't go all the way through because of wetlands, but there's certainly, if you're, if you're, you could have a dead-end road.
Right, you could have, you would have really got one lot out of it, I think, by building a town. Yeah, I guess they could have.
I can't tell from here, it's a big piece. I mean, it looks like you probably put a couple of houses, even though only one is planned. Based on the pieces being shown, it looks like there's enough land for more than one house. However, I'm just curious as to why that wasn't part of the planning. Was there something they didn't want to cut into be near wetlands, or? It's really open-ended question.
Yeah. I can't answer that one.
You can't?
I mean, it obviously was approved a long, long time ago, before what was, any type of wetland regulation. So wetlands, I believe, came into play in 1975. The Connecticut Wetlands Act, if I recall, around that time.
What was the property purchased from this particular owner?
A year ago.
A year ago, so it went into 75 and last year it was purchased. Okay, that.
Before 75, I would imagine that this was.
Something about knowledge of prior existing conditions. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything they want to add? Anybody in the, in the room, the public, have anything they want to add?
Yeah, Susan Garten, who wants to speak again.
I'll let her speak, and then I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let Latoya and Jason speak after that, if they would like to speak again. Susan? Go ahead, unmute yourself.
Thank you. I just wanted to answer Ms. Morris Daly's question. This is a really special piece of property. As you could see from the aerial view that Mr. Guiner showed, it's heavily wooded throughout. A number of us have purchased, have just moved in in the last five to 10 years specifically because of its unique characteristics. We look out our back windows, our kitchen windows, our decks, and it's uninterrupted woodlands with wildlife coming out. There are wild turkeys and deer and fox and the occasional bear. And it feels like the best of Bloomfield. It feels like rural living but with Bloomfield convenience, and that's why we bought it. And the driveway would require all, it's such a narrow strip, it would require all those trees to be taken out, and then a whole sector, a whole swath of trees to be taken out to reach the property, and it would really alter all the abutting neighbors. I think there are seven of us, our enjoyment of our backyards. I do believe that the Marshes have the best intentions in creating a barrier, but it's not really possible to do that in a way that would preserve our enjoyment of the properties we bought exactly because of this. We all knew when we bought our, our houses, our abutting houses, all the problems with the property, and we relied on that. And it seems unfair to us that new owners can come in with the same knowledge we have and just take down, take down the trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Latoya or Jason, do you want to respond at all?
Certainly. The width of a driveway is probably about half the width of what they have planned for Bidwell Terrace. In addition to that, there's actually pine trees that border both sides of that property on the entranceway off of Oak Lane, which I believe, according to my surveyor, are owned by 10 and by 16 Oak Lane. In addition to that, there's a good three to four acres, I would say three, three and a half acres, that's undevelopable in there. 100% can't be touched because of wetlands, which, once again, has very little impact on people's backs views, their porches. I bought the land specifically because I can put a house there and not have to see a neighbor. Left, right, front, back, middle, anything. And that was my full intentions, to be tucked in, tucked away, and you know, if I had found 10 acres, I would have bought 10 acres. And I still would have only developed about 3/4 of an acre. And those are my intentions, and I don't intend to go any further than that. There won't be any major tree removal. I've even looked at it with a critical eye on which larger tree should stay, provided, you know, preliminary, the way I see where a house should be put. By no means by an architect or my engineer, but what I see is a very doable plan. By no means am I an architect or my engineer, but what I see is a very doable plan and still have peace within the neighborhood and not have, what I see is the neighbor's back light shining into my, you know, front yard, or whatever it be, or vice versa. I don't want to disrupt the area, I just want to tuck a house in the middle of it, and it's pretty easy.
And then, if I can say, like, from as far as the residents on Cyrus Lane, lots nineteen through twenty-two is ours, and nineteen through twenty-two is undevelopable. So, that will never be touched, which would go into the complaint of not, of the concern of the wooded area in that space being removed. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two won't be touched.
Which one is Cyrus Lane, Jose?
Right here.
Can someone, can someone circle that, is that the same wooded area that they described as beautiful?
Right, it's, it's twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen, can you see that?
I'm trying, I'm trying to see it again.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. They're behind seven, five, and three, Cyrus, which is over here. Unfortunately, I don't know why our GIS is not showing street names.
I do believe the neighbor circled something north of that, though, it was north in between the two houses, yeah. Up there, where your, yep, to the left, to the left.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the right of way, that's, that's, yeah, that's.
That's the right of way with the driveway.
This is where the, and, and I think, here's the pine trees that I believe Mr. March was talking about. There's a pine tree here, there's a few pine trees here, driveway would go in here, and then come out to about here, where the house would be.
Mr. Marsh, your, your understanding when you purchased this land, was that you were going to be able to build a house on it?
My intentions were, and that's pretty much my understanding, that I would probably be able to build, you know, a single family. My understanding was in the past that there was a couple other ideas thrown out there for some kind of development within there, and it was shot down based on, you know, the sheer size of what, this scale of what they were trying. I felt as if it was going to be a nice spot to put a house, you know, smaller, medium sized two thousand square foot house, and have it so that I don't have to hear neighbors, they don't have to hear me, I don't have to see them, they don't have to see me. There's, you know, quite a bit of buffer. I looked at two acre lots and stuff like that, and I just couldn't find anything where I could have that amount of buffer from neighbors.
Right, well, this is an R twenty zone, so you have plenty of buffer. In this area. All right, is there, is there any? Is there any other, anything else you want to add? Jason or Latoya?
We do have a, I guess Susan Gart has her hand up again. Oh, no, maybe not, oh, panelists, never mind, no, she doesn't.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add, Jason or Latoya? And then, Jose, I wanted to get your opinion on, on this as well.
No, ma'am.
No, you're all set.
So, everybody's set? Okay, I think you heard my opinion, I think the applicants did come in, I mean, there, there have been other proposals. I guess if you could, if you could put a road, somebody could apply for, for something more than just a R twenties to allow, to allow two families as a right, you know, on there. So, I guess if you want to put a road, you could put a road in there and build a couple of, get a couple of lots and get four, four units in there if you had to. But again, I think the, you know, one single family home as a rare lot is, is a reasonable use, considering the fact that the rest of that parcel is undevelopable. You know, under cost, you know, unless you want to, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but I, you know, one of the things I do is for planning is keep up with the, the law of takings. And, and, and unless you provide some reasonable use of someone's property, you're basically taking, you're taking their, all, all value out of the property. There's, there's, unless they can do something with it under zoning, then you're, you're basically rendering it useless. And, and, and you'd have to, you might have a case for having to compensate the landowner. So, but again, I'm not a constitutional lawyer. I think the one, one, one single family home on a rare lot is, is more than reasonable. I think the, the buffer areas, the wetland areas, there can't be touched, as mentioned. So, all that tree canopy that you see behind the houses on Cyrus are not going to be, they're not going to be stirred at all, along with most of the, if, if the driveway comes up to here, you're gonna have all that, all the trees that are on Bidwell on, on top of that buffering. So, we're talking, simple measure from, I guess, number five is, is where the, to, 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 to where the driveway would come, come in. We're talking, there's a hundred and eighty-seven feet of, 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 of existing buffer, of tree buffer, to that point.
And all these houses in this area, all these lots on Oak and all these down in here on Cyrus, they're, they're all R twenty, correct?
Yes, I believe so, let me see if I can, I, I don't think my zoning layer works, but there are twenty, R twenties.
Twenty lot that is, that, that, if it was in somewhere else, I mean, they could build, they can subdivide, whatever, it's, it's a very big piece of property.
Yes, I mean, you know, again, you have, you have to have the environmental constraints on there, so. And it would probably, to bring in a full road, would be very costly for just maybe one or two houses.
And Jason and Latoya, either one of you, you're willing to, you are going, you know, if this is passed tonight, you're going to work with the town planner and wetlands to come up with a spot on this property that's going to be the best spot for, for the wetlands and for you guys, I mean, you'll work with the town on those things.
Yeah, that's not an issue whatsoever.
Well, I, I am all set. Does anybody else, any commissioners have any other questions before I close the public hearing?
No further questions.
I don't see any hands, okay. So, I, I am going to close the public hearing. Does anybody on the commission want to discuss the application at all? Or do they just want to make a motion?
So, who's, I guess, who's sitting, just to make sure, we have six members, oh, no, five. All right, never mind. I forgot, I forgot, Latoya March was a, was invited in as a panelist.
Sitting, everybody is voting that is here tonight.
Jackie, I make a motion that we adopt the variance for the driveway.
Building, the whole, the whole thing.
For the whole, yes, for the whole. To build single family home on property. What is the number?
Eighty-seven dash four dash one. Dash one two.
One twenty-eight dash thirty-one oh seventeen.
Correct.
And that, can you add into that, that the hardship is that they have already purchased that property and that there would be no other use to the property? And that it's not going to, you know, as far as we're concerned, it's not gonna cause any type of, of public hazard? Just that you need to add that.
Yes, that, that if the variance is not granted, it would create property be, basically being useless. And I feel that it would not impede or create any kind of safety hazard for the budding neighbors.
Thank you, and do I have a second to that?
Second, second.
Wait, wait, who, who is my first second? Okay, Bob, thank you, I, I just heard lots of voices. Okay, any discussion, or is everybody ready to vote? Everybody ready to vote?
Yeah, I'm just, I just have a comment, Bob, I. The owners have a right to buy the property, if it's for sale, or if it's gifted to them, and they have a right to come into the town, and if it needs, wherever you need to build a home, to request a variance, that's their right. Regardless of what happened, what's happening with the neighbors, I have that right. So, I think the advocates are just exercising their rights under Constitution of the United States, thank you.
Okay, but you also second the nomination, the, the.
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
Okay, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the variance carries five, five to nothing. Okay, so Latoya and Jason, you can get in touch with Jose and find out what you need to do next, going forward. Okay, but you're all set.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, any, any new business? The only, the only new business is that I just want to make sure that we get real packets, because it's very hard to, you know, I don't mind getting the agenda this way, you know, that's fine, but so that, now, we know we have a meeting, but trying to look at maps and, and I couldn't even get the minutes to print till, till just a few minutes ago.
Again, I apologize, I, I mean, it was, it was like the perfect storm. Mike is leaving, he actually has left, you know. Yeah, he's left for good, he's, he gave us five months after he retired, he gave us part-time, you know, two, two part-time days a week, and, and last Thursday was finally, he said, five months, I'm out of here, so we're trying to scramble to find, we've put it out for advertising at least twice. We don't have, well, I am it now, I'm on top of everything else, and I was out for over three weeks with, you know, with, with a medical emergency. So, that's why things were kind of disorganized, but when I got back, we do have an admin person, a very good one, but again, he's just learning, you know, what all the packets need to go out and what things need to be in the packets. And he was pretty much on his own when I was in the hospital, so. It was, it, it, you know, I'm, I'm back, but I'm back not full time either, I'm not back seven hours a day.
What happened to the secretary that used to be in the office there?
Ellen, she retired the same time Mike did.
Oh, that wasn't very nice.
No, so, so we, yeah, we ended, we ended up, like I said, we ended up with a perfect storm with a brand new admin person, and, and as soon as that person comes in, I got, I got sick and had to leave. So, they, they, I think they did a great job just holding their heads above water. But I apologize for not getting a full packet out, but I think now, I think Deshaun, you know, a quick learner, he was in the Police Department Records Division before, so. He knows how to organize things.
Who's our new admin?
Deshaun Russell. D E S H A N T Russell, R U S S E L L, I believe. I'm not sure about the last name, but Deshaun Russell. So, he's, he's, he came over from the Police Department's Record Division, so he's a very organized man. I think he's been very eager to learn, and, 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 and I know things are gonna go a lot smoother, get better. Hopefully, on my part.
Okay, that, that's wonderful. And anybody have any changes to the minutes? I was not at the meeting, I couldn't get in. Somehow, somehow my emails got messed up, and, and I didn't have an invitation and couldn't get in no matter what I tried to do. So, somebody who was actually at the meeting is gonna have to make, you know, either.
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes, I did take a look at them.
Oh, you did, Mark, okay, thank you. That's Ike, Bob Ike, okay. And, okay, that's fine, they don't have to be approved, they just have to be motioned. Anybody else have any business to come before this board? Mark, you're running again in the fall?
Yes, I talked to.
I know you too, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Michelle, I talked to Michelle, just the other day, I saw her out, and she mentioned that they're gonna be doing interviews at the end of the month.
And I had heard that Tashna and Keith are gonna want to leave us in the fall, in November, and move on. You still have a bunch of months.
I was just, Michelle had reached out to me to do other things.
Okay, all right, as long as you keep involved, that's the important thing. And I heard Robert Ike might be doing other things also.
No, what's his name, David Kamens, who I'm filling in for, he's gonna be the candidate for, and we have Alan Bucowski's gonna be the candidate for taking Marie McDonald's place.
Oh, oh, I know both of them, very well.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam, what's his name, is an assessor, Bucowski, Alan.
Yeah, he's Chair of the National Wetlands Agency right now.
Yeah, yeah, and I think David, I think David Kamens was on this board many, many, many years ago.
Yes, he was, yes, he was.
For about a minute or two. All right, well, I don't have any other business, does anybody else have any other business? No, and, and Jose, is there anything in July? When, when is our July meeting, by the way?
Good question.
It's not the fifth.
No, because, let me check my calendar. It would probably be the Tuesday, the.
No, we, we usually do the following week, unless.
Do we? I don't know, I, I'll have to check.
On the agenda as of now, or no?
Uh, no, no.
All right, all right, well, it was nice seeing everybody, if I don't see you, have a wonderful summer. And you, carry yourself, Jose.
I will, thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye-bye.
Feel better, Jose.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.